Good evening, everyone. We'll call our meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any additions to this evening's agenda?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I would like to get some clarification on action item for setting a public hearing to rescind ordinance number 1103 for zoning. I think that should be from R3 to R2 rather than what it's showing here.
Correct.
Okay. And then I also would like to add a utility committee meeting that we held prior to the council meeting to the agenda.
Thanks. We'll add that to our committee reports. Okay, anything else, counsel? Now, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the January 26 meeting. You have also the December finance report. We've liquor license approvals for University Amoco, Aranda's Mexican Restaurant, The Gardens, and Walmart. And claims, we have an amended amount. Entertaining motion to approve those consent agenda items. So moved. Moved by Hammuss.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Counsel, move to our resolutions and action items. And we have two resolutions for tax abatement at 602 East Adams Avenue and 604 East Adams Avenue. Emily, you're here this evening. Is your— are these projects completed?
No.
Okay.
Just going to start.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, generally, the applications are approved, I think, once the project is finished. Are you—they can be constructed in this year?
Yes, we're hoping to start within about a month. But the reason I've come this early is because I'm also applying—
Why don't you come on up to the podium? Yeah, we can get that.
I'm applying for the new workforce housing tax incentive program through the state. And they require that the city gives a like contribution, but I think it's a certain amount per unit. And I had to get a tax abatement first to be able to apply for that. And we have to do that before we start building.
Okay. In terms of the city contribution, is that—do they consider the tax abatement the contribution?
Yeah.
And basically, the math has worked out that what you were likely to be abated would satisfy that?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So counsel, I guess just ahead of these projects being developed, I don't see any problem with going ahead and awarding the tax abatement. I think we could probably bring it back once we have those amounts. But providing a resolution for tax abatement that would say, you know, over a three-year period, 100% of that value, of the city's portion.
Now, my question on that would be one for maybe John Morrissey. Our abatement, right now, the ordinance, is it by number amount per unit? Or is it, since these are duplexes, rather than single-family type dwellings? Because I think with single-family, you can go—
You can do each dwelling.
Okay, but that's a different number. I think the total number for a single-family is like 75,000 that can be abated for three years. But per unit, if you're doing multi-family units, was less. I think that was like 40 something per unit or something. I think we need to—I think we need to have some sort of clarification on that. But approving pending that, I think, would be fine.
Sure. Do you know the value of your—of the city's contribution, what that would need to be?
Ah, I did get something like that from Sherri. I didn't bring it with me. But what she said was the entire building would be evaluated at 109,000.
Right.
So then there was the city—I think the city's portion is 41% of that. Am I correct? No?
Or—
It's about 41%. And so it would be—
With that particular grant?
Yes. Well, with this particular—
Well, no, that would be—in other words, 41—
For the building.
Forty-one percent would be—
Evaluated on two units.
The city's portion of the taxes, right, would be about 41, right?
Yeah.
City's value.
And so it would be 75% of that. So it would be—that's how it would work out.
Well, and that's where my question—
Okay.
—came in. Because if you look at it that way, it's done as just one unit rather than multi-family, so—
We own both units.
Well, I understand that. But there's a difference between a single-family dwelling and multi-family dwellings in whether it's two, three, five, 10 units in a building. And our ordinance is written based on two different types of criteria. One, if you're a single-family dwelling. One, if you're a commercial-type business. One, if you're industrial. One, if you have units in a building—if you're redoing apartments upstairs in a building downtown, you're entitled to a particular amount. And I think that's what this kind of falls in the category of. And to me, I would like to have a little more clarification, but I don't have a problem with—
Well, I think John went back to look at the code now.
Okay.
So we'll table this, and we'll take it up a little bit later in the meeting when John has reviewed that. Thanks for that—
Okay. I do have one question. When I filled out the building permit, it asked for evaluation, and I was told just to put building materials on there. None of land, none of the foundation, none of anything else except building materials. Do you base it on that?
Well, we actually base it on the construction cost.
Okay, because it's a lot more than—
Right.
—the valuation.
Right, yeah.
And also, it's written that the abatement is under Elizabeth Kelly's name. It's Emily Kelly.
Emily, yeah.
Elizabeth is right to the south of us.
Okay. All right, so we'll be—we'll come back to that, Emily. Thank you. Next, counsel, we would like to set a public hearing. This would be for rezoning of 106 North Third Street from R3 to B1. This is a lot that is owned by Fairfield Lumber. This has been approved by planning and zoning, so we need to set a public hearing. We'll set that for our next meeting, February 23rd. Entertaining motion to set that date.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. We also will set a public hearing to rescind ordinance 1103 for the rezoning of 809 West Taylor from R2 to R3. It's actually R3 to R2, as Darren had pointed out. So we will also set that hearing for February 23rd.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a change order for the pool. Melanie, if you could tell us about that, please.
The change order that's attached to your agenda has an addition of three umbrella structures and then a deduct for the lounge chairs. The umbrellas are rather large structures. I believe that they're 20-foot in diameter. Having them—having the bases put in the concrete was already part of the project. Derek just decided that he wanted the umbrellas rather than the deck chairs. The last change order—you—or let me back up. The project budget that you approved in January had a contingency fund of $72,269. The last change order that was approved was for $60,348, which left, I'll say roughly $12,000 left in contingency on the pool project. So this change order, by the time you add in the umbrellas and take out the lounge chairs, is for an increase of $4,119, which still leaves you about $8,000 left in the contingency of the gym.
With a gym?
I'm sorry for the pool. Thank you.
Gym has a separate contingency.
Yes. The gym has its separate contingency. Thank you.
Is there going to be a change order?
Thank you, thank you.
I guess, you know, it's one of those questions with a, you know, $3.7 million project. And how far along are we to cut ourselves that close with our contingency?
The digging—well, let me back up. When we asked for the $60,000 change order to be approved, which designer are we working with on this? Burbach. Burbach thought that having 12,000 left was fine. I did not specifically ask him about taking 4,000 out. You are 90% done with excavation, probably 50% done with concrete, about 50% done with placing of the rock. I really believe that anything you have left is going to be owner-desired changes rather than we run into something. Depending on the construction schedule of the gym, we may need some of the 8,000 in contingency. The pool contractor and the gym contractor are going to be at the same site for about a month. And so we may have to, you know, pay for restoring some rock or something along those lines. But we're not going to be spending $8,000 for that. So I feel comfortable with leaving 8,000 at this point.
Okay. Thanks, Melanie.
This decision has to be made now?
Yes. That—well, in order to have the umbrellas for opening, it would have to be made now that there's an eight-week, 12-week lead time on the umbrellas because they are made specifically for the site, to colors of Derek's and his committee's choice.
I said in the meeting that we had with Burbach Melanie's referring to, and it was well over a month ago, and they felt very confident that we were past the phase of unexpected expenses. And again, they built many pools for many communities. And this was the last, my understanding, the last bid alternate for the pool, were these umbrella structures?
You know, there are things that Derek would like, but know that it's not part of the budget. So this is the last thing that we foresee bringing in front of the council.
Okay. I'll move to approve this change order.
Moved by Hallie to approve.
Second.
Second by Hammuss. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we will open a public hearing on our community recreation center project, and that would be the rec center or gym portion of it. We have Chris Smith with Carly Nelson here this evening. And I'd ask Chris if he would just give us a quick synopsis of what we have prepared. We'll be approving the plans and specifications tonight. We will be opening bids—we'll be receiving bids and opening them this Thursday on the 12th. So Chris, if you could fill in the blanks there.
Yes, thank you. On the table over here, I have the plans, the specifications, the form of contract, and an estimate of costs. There's 12 bid packages, all of which are part of what you all approved previously that will be bidding Thursday. We've been—spent a lot of time sending out invitations to bid to different companies, following up with phone calls. Really, just in the last, I'd say, two or three days, we've been getting a lot of questions back from the bidders. So we're doing our best to drum up as much interest as we can on the project. We look at bid coverage as being definitely an indicator of whether or not we're going to come in within budget. We're hoping to get—well, we're hoping to get three bids in every bid package. It's looking like that may not happen in a couple of packages. I think we may end up with two, perhaps, in a bid package or two. But definitely seeing some interest in the project here. Obviously, we'll know more Thursday evening, how things come out. So again, the drawings and the specifications and all the documents are there if anybody would like to look at them. Anybody have any questions on the project?
How many addendums have you issued so far?
I'm sorry, I didn't—
How many addendums?
There's three. Actually, the third addendum came out today, and that'll be the final one, so. It's—addendums are a lot of times are the results of questions that bidders ask. And it's—it's a small enough project that human nature is to procrastinate. It's a small enough project that bidders are waiting pretty much till the last week to unroll the drawings and really get into it. So inherently, the questions are coming in late in the process, which is forcing some fairly late addendums. But we've drawn the line right now that we're answering questions that we can answer without, you know, making a physical change to the contract documents. So things that just need some clarification as to what the intent is, we're answering. But things that require a formal addendum, we're just telling bidders that you're too late for questions, and you have to bid what you see, so.
What type of timeline do you anticipate for this project?
As far as the construction schedule?
Yeah, as far as construction schedule is concerned.
Yeah. We're hoping—obviously, depending where bids come in, we're hoping to break ground in the spring. So roughly April 1st is the intent. And aggressively hoping to complete construction in mid to late December of 2015. So that's a fairly aggressive schedule.
Yeah, that's—
It's going to—a lot of it's going to depend on—
It's mildly placed.
Yeah. It's aggressive.
If earthwork or something like that doesn't start until June—
Well, if earthwork doesn't start until June, we definitely wouldn't make that. We've been—we've been reporting the 12-month construction schedule on the project.
But that isn't—from the time you let to the 1st of January is not 12 months?
No, that's correct. We've been—up until the schedule that went out in the bid documents, we've been talking about a 12-month schedule. We redefined the schedule and put it out. Some of the committee members have expressed definitely some interest in getting moved in this coming winter here. So that's what we put out. I think if the weather cooperates, we get a good spring and a good summer, I think that's doable. Obviously, if it's really, really wet spring and a wet summer where you're—
Well, yeah, when you've got to put in that much fill to bring the site up, and if it's wet—
You can't get compaction.
You aren't going to get compaction, and you're not going to be able to build anything on it until you do.
Yes. Obviously, the weather is out of our control, but optimistically—
Now, when—with your experience, have you found that when your construction schedule, is it an accelerated rate? Does that incur on a more regular basis addendums or change orders in order to work different types of components together?
Yeah. Good question. That would certainly not be our intent, and there's a happy medium in there that if you build too fast, then your quality and your cost is sacrificed. There's also a happy medium the other direction. If you build too slow, the longer people are there, the more things can cost. So I think what we've tried to find is a middle ground where we don't want any grass growing on the site. We want to keep—the ball moving forward, but still maintain a quality project. So I think what we've intended to do is find that happy medium where both the schedule, the quality, and the cost is under control, so.
Well, I think I'd like to express, you know, although we'd like to move it along quickly, quality is of my utmost concern of the project. We're spending a lot of money on this, and I would hate to see it rush too much to meet some kind of deadline that, you know, isn't reasonable or is going to cost us more money or things of that nature, quality issues. So I would much rather see it move along at a pace that we have good quality and we have time to think things through and, you know, make decisions on change orders if they're—if they come up and that sort of thing, so.
Yep. Point taken. I agree.
Thank you, Chris. So this—is there anyone who would like to address the public hearing? Now, we'll close the public hearing and ask for approval of the plans and specifications, form of contract for the community recreation center.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you.
I have one final question. Chris, do you know how long it's going to take you to tabulate bids? Like, when will we have that information?
Oh, yeah.
So what we'll do after we—everybody here, would you let me—
Yeah, come on back, yeah. We can, but the folks at home would love to hear the report. Thanks.
So what we'll do with the apparent low bidder in each of the bid packages, we'll contact every individual company. It's not real uncommon that we find problems with the bids and have to switch the apparent low bidder. But we'll contact every individual company. The committee has a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday to review things, review some of the alternates, how the bids come in within budget. And then the intent is that the committee can come to consensus, come to the next city council meeting, which is scheduled for the—
23rd.
23rd. And then the committee is intending to make a recommendation on the award of the contracts and which alternates are considered, so.
Okay. I think it's imperative, at least in my opinion, that we have that documentation far before that meeting so that—and whatever the committee's recommendations are, because I don't want to decide that night—
Yep.
—what we're doing. I'd like to have some time to think about it and consider what they're recommending.
When would you like to have that?
As soon as possible. I mean—we're on a short timeframe.
Well, if it could be available Wednesday or—
Well, you're going to get the bids turned in to you Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thursday, you'll have till probably the following Monday.
Well, he says he's meeting with the committee on Tuesday.
That's based on the committee's decisions, though.
Yeah.
The committee's meets on Tuesday. So what time would you need after Tuesday?
Well, that's a little bit out of our control because I don't—I don't know whether the committee will come to consensus.
Well, assuming they do.
Assuming that they do.
Assuming they have consensus.
I mean, we should know at the end of the day, Tuesday.
Yeah, I think Jessica's saying she just wants to see what the committee recommends as early as possible. So generally, we get our information on Friday. If it's available prior to that, fine. If not—
I mean, I think this is something that we're going to have maybe some questions back and, you know, back and forth. It won't be just something that we can make a call on, on the 23rd. You know what I mean? If we don't have ample notification.
I can certainly get preliminary bid tabulations out this Thursday evening. That's not a problem. But with that information, I will not have talked to all the low bidders—
Sure.
Nor will the committee have discussed it. So I can certainly send that out if you'd like, some preliminary numbers.
Sure, that'd be fine. But I think I'm more interested in what the committee's going to want to recommend and what they're going to be asking us for.
Well, and counsel—
They're welcome to go to the committee meeting also. If anybody has the time to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, it's an open meeting, public meeting for anyone.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
John, I'll ask you if you can report to us.
I was able to find a copy of the municipal code in this building. And it appears that, except for a single-family, talking about any other multiple residential unit, it'd be 40,000 cap.
Cap, per unit.
Per unit.
Yeah.
Per dwelling unit.
See, and that was—that was what I was thinking. So if you build—if you build a duplex that's $100,000 total, you're entitled up to $40,000—
Per dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit.
Right.
So, okay, okay.
My understanding is those figures will still work.
Right. Yeah. Thank you, John.
All right, so on with that information, entertain a resolution—take them separately. Resolution for one, to approve tax abatement for 602 East Adams.
So approved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. And a resolution approving tax abatement for 604 East Adams.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Thanks. Next, counsel, we have a engineering services agreement with French Rentier. Melanie, if you could tell us about this project?
This is for the design and the construction observation for reconstruction of Kirkwood from where the last project left off up to Ninth Street. This is an SCP-funded project. And Daryl says that it's part of next year's budget, right? Okay. So that's—the engineering will be paid with local funds, and the construction is 80% federal and 20% city. So the lump sum for the design is $24,900, and the budget for the engineering during construction is $25,000.
And that's what, approximately two and a half blocks, three blocks, maybe?
Uh—
Ninth, Eighth, Seventh?
Block and a half.
Yeah, it's a—yeah.
It's from in between—
Block and a half.
Just past Seventh to Ninth Street.
Okay. I couldn't remember whether it was just east or west of Seventh. So it must be west of Seventh on Kirkwood—
Yes.
—going to Ninth. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Yeah, this project will complete Kirkwood, east and west. So entertain a motion to approve the engineering services agreement.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hammuss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Thank you. Okay. In my report, counsel, I do not have any board appointments for this evening. Would just mention that we are in the middle of our site visit from the Blue Zones evaluation team. They started this morning at 9:00 at the Arts Convention Center. We were able to give them a community overview, and then they had meetings throughout the day with restaurants, schools, grocery stores. Tomorrow, that will continue. I think they're very impressed with everything that they're seeing. I think things are going very, very well. It's culmination of a lot of volunteer hours. We've had a great group of people work on this for the last two years. They were all present and got to talk about what they've done and some possible improvements to the Blue Zones program, which I think they all took greatly to heart and with great respect for what we've accomplished as a community. Officially, we will be notified in about 30 days. But we'll complete that site visit tomorrow, and then we'll wait a month and have a party. So we'll move on to committee reports. John is not here. Is there someone else who would like to report for Ways and Means?
Well, I—I can. We met on January 28th and had a discussion of what we would propose for lost allocations, the local option sales tax requests that we receive. We held our budget at $100,000. We came in at $99,900. We are proposing what we have listed in your link here, but they are as follows. Art Walk, $10,000 of their request. Sophia, which is all things Italian, $1,000 of their request. Live on the Square, $500 of their request. The Volunteer Center, $2,500. Fair Fest, $2,000. Agency on Aging, which is the senior center, $4,000. Lord's Cupboard for $450. Park and Rec, $2,500. New Police Vehicle, $34,700. Beautification, $8,000. Noah's Ark, $2,000. The CDBG Grant, which has already been approved by the council for $20,000. Police Reserve, $750. Employee Appreciation at Christmas Party, $1,500. And Fire Cribbing for the Civic Center at $10,000. Party, $1,500. And fire cribbing for the Civic Center at $10,000, for a total of $99,900.
No, fire cribbing's for Scott.
Oh, for Scott Vaughn.
Yeah, that's for, like, to use with, like, when they lift vehicles up.
I'm getting two issues confused. I knew there was problems with the sprinkler system.
Yeah, this is like their antiquated system for lifting vehicles up and stuff.
All right. So, so again, the total is $99,900 for that list of items.
Thank you. I think the approach that Ways and Means took with these recommendations was based on funding fully, everything that had to do with our internal city agencies and programs, and also Agency on Aging and Lord's Cupboard, and then the other good community organizations that we generally do fund, obviously with some fraction of that, of their request. And, you know, given the fact that we have limited amount of dollars in that discretionary portion of our local option sales tax, these are the totals that we're able to dispense this coming year. So to entertain a motion then to approve the recommendation by Ways and Means, that the, that this become part of our budget for dispersment of lost funds for '15, '16.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Here, also utility committee report.
Um, yeah, we, the utility committee met at 6:15 prior to the meeting tonight. We had two sewer adjustment requests that we addressed. First, the first one was at 2400 Granville Avenue, and the request was to be credited back to the account the amount of $351 for the sewer portion of a water leak at the residence. And the second one was for 302 East Burlington Avenue, and the request was granted for $665.54 to be credited back to the homeowner's account. So I would like approval from the council with the recommendation of the committee, that it be approved for those credits to be put back into the accounts.
Okay. So I'll take that as a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Um, we also discussed water, water rate increases that will come into effect in June or July 1st of this coming year. We're trying to stay ahead of this for the municipalities that have to certify their budgets at the same time we do. We're proposing that the municipalities be increased by 5% for this coming year.
Okay.
And again, that won't take place until July 1st. And that was pretty much what we discussed.
All right. Thank you, Darren Puschetta. Next, we have our city administrator report.
Okay, I'm going to have to read this from my notes, because this starts to get a little complicated today. And I'm just giving you an overview. But Joy received several emails from a Steve Kerber with the Iowa Department of Transportation. And the correspondence has been related to two major federal regulations. First, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Americans with Disability Act of 1990. So the best comparison I have for this is that the DNR is the enforcement arm of the Clean Water Act. The DOT has become the enforcement arm for these two federal regulations. So the, all of this discussion is not because, is not only because you have federal, you receive federal aid money, or that you have over 50 employees, or that Highway 1 comes through it. It's merely the fact that you're municipal government. So attached to your agenda are two instructional memorandums. This is the way that the DOT communicates, number 1.07 and 1.080. And the first, 1.07 is the Title VI. I believe that's how it's attached to your, attached to your agenda. And this is related to the Civil Rights Act. And the Title VI, Morrissey, John Morrissey can probably talk much better about this, but I'm going to just give you an overview today. It specifically deals with nondiscrimination in federally assisted programs and activities. It prohibits discrimination, impacts, in impact services, benefits of access to participation in and treatment for, under federal aid programs. What this boils down to is policies that the city will need to have in place for all contracts. And I'll get to the next steps here in a minute. Then, the 1.080 is the ADA section, the Americans with Disabilities Act. So ADA prohibits discrimination on a basis of disability in state and local government services, programs, and activities regardless of whether the agency is a recipient of federal aid or not. And the, this regulation states that providing streets and sidewalks are considered a program. So what this means, what does this mean for you guys? So the next several steps is, first thing is, we had to document that you guys reviewed this. So having these meeting minutes, I will send those off to the DOT. Then at your next meeting, we're going to do two, or you'll, you'll make two actions. The first would be to appoint a Title VI and an ADA coordinator. I would recommend, not because I'm leaving the interim position, but I am, I would recommend that this be your city administrator, and that you do it to the position rather than a specific person so that it doesn't change if the person changes. And we'll do that at your next meeting. The net, the other thing is that we have to fill out a site review tool. This is a form provided to the city by the DOT, and it's basically an inventory of the city's policies as, as you currently stand. You're not going to get penalized faster or anything like that by not having any of these policies in place. It's, it's essentially giving you a starting point. So I am going to work with the city staff to get that filled out in the next couple of weeks. Both your coordinator and the site review tool have to be turned in by March 2nd. So we'll act on those at your next council meeting. Then in March and April, the DOT will come for an onsite visit, and they'll arrange with Mike for that meeting. The site review tool will indicate that you do not, well, more than likely will indicate, you do not have an ADA transition plan, or you don't have a transition plan for upgrading your public buildings and your sidewalks. Darrell does a great job getting them as he goes, but as far as, you know, a formal plan of when things are going to be happening, you do not have that. And then I'm sure there's some Title VI policies that are going to have to be put into place. So that's, we'll, all that will kick off once the DOT's major site visit. Mike will have his feet thoroughly wet, and we can start to deal, work on these. The ADA transition plan is something that French Reniker can help Mike with if needed, and I'm sure that John Morrissey will dive into lots of the Title VI stuff that's needed. So that's my few-minute overview of these two things that's required by the DOT that we go over, these two procedures.
Thanks, Melanie. And so we'll, we'll look for action steps at our next meeting.
Yes.
But before you go, you know.
Before we go, a property met tonight.
Okay.
And we have a situation that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Well, I think probably Adam is here. He can almost do a better job of telling you about this than I can. But the thing about it is, the situation, you know, we were given, I'm going to read from Adam's information. We were, the city was gifted, two years ago, the building on 102 South 23rd Street. And I think, Adam, do you want to talk to them?
Sure.
Tell them about it. You do a good job.
Come on. So, yeah, it's approximately a 9,000 square foot building. It was gifted to the city about two years ago. Shortly thereafter, the city, Kevin Flanagan and Tracy Vance negotiated with MRC Recycling to do a two-year lease for the building at cost of the property taxes. So MRC Recycling was paying the property taxes. And at the end of the two years, they had an option to purchase for $15,000 contingent on them meeting several things. Foremost, that being creation of three to five jobs. That didn't occur. The lease, I was taking a look at that a few months back, talked to Mayor Malloy on that, and we met again in January. MRC is under new ownership. They sent an email out about a couple of days ago, indicating that they were going to remove all their equipment out of the building, and that they're going to be terminating utilities at the end of this month. They also had a subleaseur in there, which is a questionable situation. And there's a gentleman living up there. So at this point, we're not sure if MRC Recycling's going to be sticking around in town. Probably not. They do offer a pretty valuable service in the community. They're about the only electronics recyclable company in southeast Iowa, so we would like to see them stay. But the building's in pretty rough condition. It's filled with mold, as it was two years ago, and there's still some drainage problems on the north side of the building. So I guess, turn it back over to you to kind of say we're at the determination for a meeting.
Exactly. So when property committee met, we met with John Morrissey and Adam, and the determin, the determination was made that we have to do something. So I guess what we're proposing is that we determine what the fair market value of the building would be. And so we will need to get an appraisal, I guess we need, you know, to move into that venue, to get an appraisal, and then we will make a determination as to whether the building will be, you know, disposed of or rented. And, you know, fortunately, Adam has several possibilities of people that might be interested in it. He did have Dick Reed do a walkthrough, and obviously, there is mold in the building, at least on the main level. And there also is some drainage problem on the north side of the building. So that's obviously what's caused the mold. So I guess at this point, what I'm asking is that the council would approve the fact that we would get an appraisal of the building, and then make a decision as to what we would like to do at that point.
Okay. Um, yeah.
So I'd move for approval.
Actually, with this not on our agenda, Martha, I don't know if we want to take.
I know it isn't.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's table that request till the 23rd for action.
That's fine. That's perfectly all right.
But, but I'm glad that the council's aware of this. Now, is there an issue with our lease? The expiration was sometime in February.
The lease is being terminated February 15th. However, I think.
That's the reason that we brought it here.
The conclusion was, is that they'll just transition out by the end of the month, pending any other changes.
Okay, so that's going to be taking place anyway. But, but I agree. I mean, we, you know, I think the only reason that we agreed to such favorable terms was that it was going to be a job creator, and that the building was going to, going to be restored and remediated for mold and water. If that has not taken place, then if we're going to retake ownership, I think we, we would move towards a sale. So we'll, let's get that on our agenda for our next meeting.
That's fine. Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Adam.
So anyway, what I, before we, our next item of business would be to go into closed session. But before we do, I just wanted to take note of the fact, council, that this will be the last meeting that Melanie will be reporting to us as our interim city administrator, a little over seven months that she's been performing this for us. And that tells me that things have been going quite well, because it's, it has really been a seamless period of time that you've been with us, Melanie, and you've been a, a great help. We've, you know, gone through this interim period before without someone looking after important projects and keeping us up to date on things that, that need to be followed through with. And you did it very professionally, and you've got great communication skills, are very clear with all of us. We really appreciate the, the work that you've done. I hope and I know it's valuable to you. We just don't know how yet. But, and you're probably anxious to return to the work that, that you have to do with your chosen passion and profession. But thank you so much for everything that you've given us over the last seven months. We really, really appreciate it. We know we're going to continue to have a close working relationship, but thank you for this role that you played for us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. You're welcome. Next, council, we'll be, yeah, let's go. Next, council, we do have real estate to discuss in closed session, so entertain a motion to go into closed session according to Iowa Code 21.5J.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.